Maybe, yeah, okay. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of Monday, April 10th, 2017. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agendas are available outside the chamber doors. If anyone needs a parking pass, they're available up here with our clerk. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item may come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, followed by those who are opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Testifiers should clearly state their name and address. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a courtesy, an alarm will sound after four minutes. After testifying, if you could please sign in on those little pink sheets that are near the microphone, and after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on today's agenda nor planned for a future agenda. Courtesy and decorum are expected of all who come before this body. No one may approach city staff without permission from the council, and please refrain from applause, booing, or other expressions of support or opposition, except through your testimony. All cell phones should be turned off, private conversations taken outside of the chamber, and during the week, if you have questions for the council, please feel free to contact any one of us. Teresa, would you please call the first item?
Yes, our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through seven.
Would anyone like to come forward and speak to any of these items, one through seven? Seeing none, please call next time.
If not, we can vote on these items. We just have the one. Item one is introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. We do not do the oath on SDLs. I'll call items eight and twenty together. They're the application of Whiskey Run Creek Vineyard and Winery for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately sixty feet by ninety feet at the shops at Piedmont at 1265 South Cotner Boulevard on May 20th between 3:00 and 11:00 PM, as well as the applications of Stonebridge Vineyard, Glacial Till Niobrari Valley, Deer Springs, Babs Inc., Moretta Vista, Soaring Wings, Aspire Cellars, and Kimmel Orchard, all for the same event. Welcome.
Hi, how's everybody doing? My name is Brian Wallingford. I reside at 2230 North 60th. I am standing in front of you today for the Piedmont Uncorked Wine Festival. This will be the second year that we've done it. It will be held this year from four to nine, as opposed to last year where we went a little bit later. The event, we're selling packages for it, so you'll get a wine glass and fifteen wine samples for a package. Anyone is allowed to come. You're allowed to come and get in and free. The only restriction is twenty-one and plus. That way, we can kind of keep things under control. In the SDL, obviously, we've asked for wine tasting and selling off-sale bottles there. We've also asked for one row of snow fence as opposed to two, since this is an event where everyone will come in, everyone will have wristbands, everyone is getting carded. If, you know, basically, it's covered that way. If they don't have a wristband, they don't get a drink anyway. So two rows of snow fence, we're asking for one. Any questions?
How'd it go last year?
Good. Last year went great. We had sixteen Nebraska wineries or fifteen Nebraska wineries. The whole event literally is focused on local businesses. It is all Lincoln restaurants and Nebraska wineries, Nebraska breweries, Nebraska vendors, whether they own their own little small business or, you know, little trinket shop. And, yeah, we had a great turnout last year, and we're hoping for a better turnout this year.
Are a lot of these are repeat?
A lot of them are, yeah. I believe I have fifteen Nebraska wineries this year, twelve of which are returning. We are adding Backswing Brewing to it to have some beer there, which, they were not there last year, they weren't open at that time. And then we have different bands this year playing as well.
Thank you. Carl?
Yes, there's live music, and so the stage, was there need to change the stage for this year, or how?
Nope, nope, it's the exact same setup as last year, and the exact same as our Oktoberfest as well. We'll have a sixty-by-ninety tent set up. I've already applied for the tent permit as well. And there is a, I believe it's twelve-by-twenty-foot stage underneath that tent. That's where the band will be. We then have seating set up, and everything is according to regulation.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? I have a quick question for Conan, if he's here. He was just here, did he step out? All right, well...
Is it something maybe I can answer?
Yeah, so I just noticed that this requires a waiver of state statute to allow for the off-sale wine bottle purchases. I assume we've done that in the past, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm just curious, because some of the other items for SDLs on this agenda don't require the waiver, is that, is that correct? The farmer's market, for instance, does it have different rules for some reason?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, maybe when Conan comes back, we can ask him about that. I just wanted to make sure we're doing things consistently. Right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next are items nine and ten, application of Mr. Huey's Two for a Class I liquor license at 4131 Pioneer Woods Drive, Suite 102, and the related manager, application of Nan Chen.
Is the applicant here? Oh, great, please come forward.
Hi.
Just wait.
Complete the paperwork.
Yes, would you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name is Nan Chen. The address is 4131 Pioneer Woods Drive, Nekka, Nebraska.
Okay, okay.
And could you please state your name and address, sir?
Yes, my name is John Gardner, 7348 South 30th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm a friend of the owners.
Great. Could you tell us a little bit about your application, what brings you to see us today?
Um...
I think it's due to customer demand. The restaurant's been in business two years, they have a pretty extensive menu, and customers...
And customers, like, they really want to us having some beers, wine, when they're doing the dinners, so that's why today I'm here.
Okay, any other questions from council? All right, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Would anyone else like to testify on these items? All right, please call the next items, Teresa.
All right, next are items eleven and twelve, application of The Mill for a Class C liquor license at 2021 Transformation Drive, Unit Three, and the related manager, application of Tamara Sloan.
Hi.
Hi, would you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
We do.
Thank you. Hi, Dan.
Hi, I'm Dan Sloan. Tamara and I own The Mill. After, what, seventeen years of kind of sleepy existence, we're starting a new operation out on Innovation Campus.
Dan, can you just give us your address real quick, before you proceed?
I'm sorry.
The current address?
405 South 28th.
Okay, thanks.
So what, I'm sure you're familiar with Innovation Campus, but it's kind of an island out there, there's no food, there's no coffee, there's really nowhere to be. Does a lot of research, so everybody's in locked offices, so this is kind of a new concept for us. What we're going to do is a lot more food, in addition to our traditional coffee house, but then kind of into the afternoon and very early evening, we're going to morph into more of that social spot, so we thought it would be a nice amenity to that. We will be a coffee house with some alcohol, we will not be a bar with some coffee, we won't be open late, we'll only, at this point, we're only anticipating weekdays hours.
And we're expanding our food menu to go along with that. Excellent. Any questions from the council? Did you want to mention maybe the letter from Ronnie Green, the new chancellor?
We did. There's a little ambiguity as to how close we are to the university. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that the university is fully on board with what we're doing. Part of this is at their request, and Chancellor Green submitted a letter of support for us.
Great, thank you, thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on these items? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, I'll call items thirteen and fourteen together. They're the application of Halftime Sports Bar and Grill for a Class I liquor license at 200 West P Street, as well as the related manager, application of Michelle Anderson.
Hi.
Hello.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
I'm Michelle Anderson, you know my house address?
Business address is fine?
Business, okay, it's 200 West P Street.
Okay.
I'm Michelle Lanzada, and business address, 200 West P Street.
Okay. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your application?
Um, we're applying for a liquor license for our sports bar and grill. It's pretty self-explanatory. We'll be offering entertainment also, so...
Okay, well, this is your chance to talk about your business a little bit, if you'd like, will you have a few minutes?
Oh, my God.
Okay, any questions from council?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to these items? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, I'll call items fifteen through eighteen together. They're the application of Casey's General Store, number 2729, for a Class D liquor license at 5500 Superior Street, and the related manager, application of Tina Krings, and then the application of Casey's General Store, number 2745, for a Class D liquor license at 2243 North Cotner Boulevard, and the related manager, application again of Tina Krings. Raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Kreitz. My address is 1841 Southwest 26th Street. I'm the district manager for both locations, and this is...
I'm Kelly Burns Rutledge. My address is 353rd Street, Garland, Nebraska, and I'm the area supervisor for both of those locations as well.
Great. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the application, and is Ms. Krings here today too, or no?
She was unable to be here, so, but we are just looking to upgrade our liquor license. Currently, we have a Class B, we are wanting a Class D due to customer demand.
Any questions? All right, I guess Ms. Krings completed her trainings at this point?
Yes, she has.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other folks who'd like to speak to these two items? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next is item nineteen, application of Omaha Exposition and Racing for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately fifty-five feet by two-hundred-five feet, four-hundred-forty feet by one-hundred-and-twenty-three feet, and thirty-five feet by sixty feet at Lincoln Racecourse at 7055 South First Street on May 5th, 6th, and 20th, June 10th, September 8th and 15th, and November 4th, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Is the applicant here today? All right.
I had contacted Christie, and she'd confirmed she was going to be here.
Okay, well, hopefully she can still make it, let's move on to the next item.
All right. Then, next would be items twenty-one and twenty-two. They're the application of Glacial Till Vineyard for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately ten feet by ten feet at the Old Chaney Road Farmer's Market at 5500 Old Chaney Road on April 30th, May 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th, June 4th, July 23rd and 30th, August 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, September 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, and October 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, and an SDL to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately ten feet by ten feet at the farmers, Hay Market Farmer's Market at 7th and P Streets on May 6th, 13th, and 20th, and 27th, June 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, July 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th, August 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th, September 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, and October 7th and the 14th, between 8:00 AM and noon.
Tim Merman, 5310 South 37th Street.
Great, welcome. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing here today?
We, this will be our fourth year being a seasoned vendor at both the Old Chaney and then the Downtown Farmer's Market. We serve free wine samples, you know, people stop by our booth, if they'd like to sample, show ID, sample the wines within the booth, and then we sell wines for off-sale to go.
Any questions? Thank you very much for coming down.
All right, thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak to these items? Conan, could you, do you mind coming up for just a quick second? I just have a question, and...
Conan Schaefer, Lincoln, please, and I will text Christie also to see if she'll come in.
Okay, just the SDLs for the Piedmont Shops Uncorked Wine and Food that had to have a state, that had to have a waiver of state statute to do off-sale wine sales, these didn't have that same request for a waiver, these Farmer's Market SDLs, is there a reason that one needs them and one doesn't, or?
Well, basically, whatever type of activity that they're asking to do, they just need to put that on the application so that the Liquor Commission knows what they're approving on there. So are we talking about the ones specifically from Glacial Till for the Farmer's Market ones, or was it the Piedmont ones?
Well, it looked like the Glacial Till Vineyard's request for SDL at the Farmer's Market didn't, didn't have the check with the requested waiver of statute for off-sale wine bottle purchases. Is that, is the Farmer's Market different than an SDL for the...
No, no.
Is that something that the state will automatically have to consider then?
Yeah, generally, the best-case scenario is if that's what they want to do, they would put that on the city application so that we would have an opportunity to know and to review and approve all of that, but ultimately, that is, if that's something that they want to do, and the city clerk is okay with that, and the city council is okay with that at this point, when they do turn in their state application, they would just want to make sure that they included it on the state one.
Okay.
That would remedy that situation if they inadvertently left it off.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, do we want to see if nineteen, Omaha Exposition and Racing, has representation at this point?
I think Conan's going to text Christie and see if she can still come.
Okay, well, then, let's move on to the next item.
We can always come back.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would move approval of items eight through eighteen, and twenty through twenty-two.
Seconded by Carl, and seconded by Jane, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
And then item nineteen, we will take that item up potentially later today.
Okay, good. All right, Teresa?
All right, we'll go on to public hearing resolutions. Item twenty-three is approving the renewal of an inter-local service agreement between the city and the UNL Board of Regents for hosting and maintaining a portal for online food handler and city alcohol training programs and providing technical support services.
Members of the council, my name is Scott Holmes, I manage the Embargo Health Division with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. This is a contract that's for two years, it will be with UNL Board of Regents, Food Science Department. We've had a contract with them since 2009. We jointly created food handler training that's online, that made it accessible to the public 24/7, and this is an ongoing process of keeping it up to date and keeping the training available to the public. The contract is for $20,000 per year, and we would ask that you would approve this contract.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak to this item? Seeing none, Teresa, please call the next item.
All right, next is item twenty-four, Comp Plan Conformance 17004, approving the proposed Cotner and P Street redevelopment plan on approximately 11.6 acres for a four-story, multi-family residential infill development with approximately 153 market rate residential units and associated underground and surface parking on property generally located between P and R Streets, 56th to North Cotner Boulevard.
Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. This is the topic of the day, the Cotner and P Street redevelopment plan, and whether or not it conforms to the city's comprehensive plan and meets with the approval of the council. It wasn't long ago when we saw this issue the first time, and it was designating these eleven and a half acres as blighted and substandard, which the planning commission did first, and then this council did second. The second step of that, then, is to draw a plan for that area, including some of the things that could be done on the public side of the equation, like sidewalks and streetscape and resurfacing roads and the like, and private sector improvements. In this case, we also describe a project that highly motivates this agenda, which is a specific project that we describe in this plan, sufficient that in the event you were to agree today to do this piece of work and to allow us to do it, we would proceed to the redevelopment agreement drafting about that project. It is, in fact, a project from the northwest corner of Cotner and P, it's the old home real estate building. It's about 1.8 acres in size. The project would be a four-story, multi-family residential infill development with approximately 153 market rate units, and they're to be marketed to millennials and empty nesters. Two floors of underground parking to provide for the residents, and then surface parking around it for guests. Public works has analyzed the traffic area and says the adequate, the street, the street work is adequate for this handling of traffic. The private investment is just under $15 million. We would like to use TIF, it would be about $2.5 million. The unique aspect about this location is that the soil, to accommodate a structure like this, needs special remediation, and so that site preparation, demolition, and environmental remediation would be significant parts of the project. To summarize, to conclude on this point, this area, the gateway area, is listed in the comp plan as a node area. And that node area is where development, we think, can be done on an infill basis with existing infrastructure. And it also says that that, because of that, and the walkability of this area, this would be appropriate for 500 to 1,000 living units within the area. This is 153 of those units that your comp plan said would be appropriate in a location like this. We'd ask for the finding that this is consistent with the comp plan, and that we allow to go forward with the developer and see if we can do a deal at Cotner and P.
Any questions for Dave? Dave, I had a question. The staff report outlines the properties, the parcels, and two of them are city-owned, the, well, one's LES and one's city. Are there reasons those are being included? Is there future plan for those properties as well, or can you discuss the relationship of those parcels to the rest?
We don't have a plan for the properties, per se. One of them is an LES substation, one, I think, is some accompanying space for parking purposes. It's not unusual, however, in the way that we've drawn, well, it'll depend on the project area that we choose for the Cotner and P, but we do include city rights of way and property on occasion in a project area, to see if there's something that can be done by the project that's good for the public property that's there as well. We don't have such a plan in this location. It was proximate, it was in the area, it was put into the, into the study area when we, when the developer hired the, the planning department, the planning association firm of Hannah Kealan, and so they drew the map, but with our approval and agreement that those were appropriate boundaries. We put them in there, someday, some way, perhaps, TIF resources generated somewhere in that project might be used to assist a public-owned property as well. We will use, for example, some private, I'm sorry, some TIF money in assisting with the integrated design around the lumberworks. There's an LES substation there, and we'd like to have a wall. At one point, we're looking to get LES to pay for that wall of some kind, but if not, maybe there would be other resources to help integrate that. That would be a, that's an example of the kind of use that we've done in the past, in which we use TIF money to assist with public property, because it is a public benefit.
Cindy?
Thank you.
Long answer.
And just to remind ourselves, this particular project went forward not looking for TIF initially, it was the soil challenges that required additional investment, is that right?
That's right. The developer came to us and said, we, you know, we had made these plans, we'd like to do this, but when we discovered the cost structure, it doesn't work, and we either have to radically change our design features and reduce the density and very much not the project that we'd like to do, or we need help to accomplish this objective. And by the way, the objective that they nominate just reads straight out of the comp plan. It's 153 units of market rate housing, right next to a node area that's specifically identified in the comp plan, so it'd fit our agenda as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, I'll call items twenty-five and twenty-six together. They're approving the Nebraska Innovation Campus Phase II redevelopment agreement between the city and Nebraska Nova LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located near the intersection of 21st and Transformation Drive for a new three-story office building of approximately 80,000 square feet and related public improvements, and amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,116,291 in TIF funds for the project.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director. Here today, along with Wayne Jormstedt in my department, who oversaw the discussions with the developer towards this agreement, and I see that the developers represented as well. This is actually the fifth building of the Innovation Campus Agenda that was undertaken a number of years ago. It's a three-story, 80,000-square-foot office building, approximately 146 surface parking spaces adjacent to the site, hopefully, a LEED silver equivalent building will be built. But part of the money that will be raised in the $15.3 million of private investment and the TIF, which is estimated at about $3 million, is the continuing construction of Transformation Drive, about 720 feet of a roadway, and the paving of a portion of public parking lots on the Transformation Drive, as well as landscaping and streetscaping. The building is intended for a private sect, for private sector companies interested in leveraging the research capacity of the university. It will be paying taxes, and that's why there could be the use of tax increment financing. The Urban Design Committee looked at the designs and gave unanimous approval at their March 7th meeting, and these are some of the renderings of the structure that they're looking for. Remember, the Innovation Campus has a relationship with a private sector developer who is in charge of building out Innovation Campus. These are conceptual renderings, and the project is anticipated to be completed by October 2018. The list of uses for the site, for the TIF money is site prep, grading, and soil remediation, the extension of Transformation Drive, streetscape and landscape needs, energy and facade enhancements, and then the spending on the parking lots. What questions can I answer for you, or is there something that the, well, the developer's here to speak on behalf of the project as well, and if you have questions, I'm sure between the three of us, we'll do our best to answer you.
Cindy? Thank you. So, can you explain, I was reading in this about the bidding process and the developer having to run bids by the city, and if the developer takes a bid other than... having to run bids by the city, and if the developer takes a bid other than what we consider the lowest qualified bid, that the mayor can override that decision. And so I'm just kind of wanting to know how that process is intended to work and why.
Let's see. Tom, you wanted to recap of that?
I'll tell you what I can do. This is score. We originally did the bidding for public improvements like landscaping and streetscaping with city bidding processes. Developers wanted to be able to integrate the bidding process with their bids so that you didn't have two different construction schedules and two different suppliers of services. So they wanted to have some hands in the bidding process. We had a controversy about a year and a half ago or two years ago on this score, and the council alter authorized us to essentially say, a developer can, we can agree that we can devolve that responsibility to the developer if we oversee them and they do exactly what the city would do if they were in our shoes. So they can't alter the standards or practices, but they can conduct them themselves and harmonize it with their own plans for their own bidding. And to that end, we've been doing that when requested ever since. We have had times when, I can remember one time when a developer did not exercise the appropriate level of oversight in our practices, and so we said, thank you very much, but you know the rules, and we took it back over and we did it ourselves and oversaw them. But other than that, developers have been successful, the most knowledgeable ones, in using this. It allows them to plan better, to structure their construction schedule better, and it's, there is a belief in the development community that privately bid items come back cheaper than publicly bid items. When the city bids, there's a belief in the development community that they get better deals than we do. So those are three reasons why developers want to do this. However, I haven't stood over a developer and instructed them on what they needed to do. On the other hand, Wynne Jermsted has. So maybe Wynne, you want to like to say something?
Good afternoon, Wynne Jermsted, Urban Development. I think Dave covered it really well. The only thing I would add that I'm not sure if Dave included was that this is for work being done in the public right-of-way that we're paying for, so it's not their building, for example. That's theirs. They can bid that as they want, but it's, and streetscape is a really common one, is that they prefer to bid it themselves for all the reasons Dave said.
And so can you explain to me when, what kind of challenges might go into a developer's decision to choose someone other than who we feel is a qualified low bidder, who the city feels is a qualified low bidder?
I don't know. I don't, it hasn't come up. I think that's something that's in all of our legal documents, and so it was included in what's required of the developer as well. We've not encountered it in any of the projects we've been involved in. But I see the law department is here to address.
I see a lawyer stepping up to the mic.
That's right. Since we're talking about legal documents, I figured it was my job. Tim C., City Law Department. I think, Councilwoman, what you're referring to is the redeveloper bidding procedures. There's a document towards the end of the agreement that's an exhibit that lays out the procedures that they have to go through. The intent of that language is to say, if you as a developer are going to try to select someone as the lowest responsible bidder and that doesn't, on the face of the bids, appear to be the lowest responsible bidder, you have to show us why you're coming to that conclusion, just like if we were to make our own decision that somebody wasn't the low responsible bidder based on the actual, the numbers in the bid because there were some other outstanding factors out there. We would want to review that on the same basis that we review our own bids, and so that's the purpose of that.
So things like past performance or insufficient funding to complete projects, that kind of?
Certainly. I think there's a number of factors set out in the ordinance that allow us to make those types of determinations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just have one question about the TIF number. Looks like it adds up to about 17.9 million, or the project total is 17.9 million. Is that correct? I also saw 16 million somewhere, so do you have agreement on the project total?
We do, and I didn't bring it up here with me. I can, Dave's got it.
And is that total just for Phase II? What we're talking about today?
Yes, yes. This is just Phase II. So the total TIF is 3.1. And then you were asking?
What the private investment is?
Private investment.
That's total?
My sheet? 15.3. Or a total of 18.4.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900. Appearing before you today on behalf of Nebraska Nova, which is the redeveloped record of Nebraska Innovation Campus. With me today is Erin Johnson, Josh Berger, and Sean Woolley from Tetrad Real Estate Group, the principals of Nebraska Nova. What is in front of you today really is the Phase II project of Nebraska Innovation Campus. I wanted to highlight where we are at Phase I project that was approved in August of 2012, included the Food Innovation Center, the Innovation Commons, and the Greenhouse Innovation Campus as a part of that Phase I project. This Phase II project is hopefully the first of multiple buildings, perhaps even up to 20 additional buildings as Nebraska Innovation Campus moves forward and is fully developed. Director Landis fully described the project to you. There's a couple additional things I wanted to mention. This project, as Dave mentioned, did receive review by the Urban Design Committee, but also in the process involved with University of Nebraska, there's an Architectural Review Committee as part of Nebraska Innovation Campus that is very rigorous and really put the project through its paces, but it did receive approval of that Architectural Review Committee of the Innovation Campus moving forward. As indicated, it is approximately a $15.3 million investment by Tetrad and will involve the use of $3.1 million of TIF. Then one thing I would mention, it includes facade enhancement and energy enhancement, but I wanted to remind you that Innovation Campus is powered in part through the partnership that the city has with the University of Nebraska in the CRES, the Central Renewable Energy System, involving the gray water out of the Teresa Street Treatment Facility. And so this building will also be utilizing that as the energy source. This project is scheduled for probably 15 to 18-month construction, so fall of 2018 would be completed. You will see that one thing that is not on your agenda today is the bond ordinance, and we hope to bring that forward in the next 30 days. We wanted to get this aspect of the project in process and on your agenda before we went forward with the bond ordinance. The bond ordinance is not going to be the standard off-the-shelf bond ordinance because it does involve work in the public right-of-way, which can involve tax-exempt financing in addition to the taxable financing. So we're going to be working that out with the bond council over the next 30 days. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Carl.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Houston. So part of this is, part of the TIF is to go for the extension of Transformation Drive to the east there?
Correct. Transformation Drive currently concludes just east of 21st Street and will be extending it towards the east, improving the transportation within Innovation Campus.
And then parking? Where will parking be?
The primary parking facility is approximately 145 stalls directly south of the building. And that will be subject to two public access easement for non-peak, non-business hours for other usage within Innovation Campus because of the other events that are held in the auditorium, et cetera.
Any other questions for Tom? Do you want to just maybe tell us a little bit about why you think this project is important for our community?
Well, yeah, I don't ever want to underestimate what's happening in Innovation Campus because this was a big step, moving from state fairgrounds into Innovation Campus, but it's continued investment and partnership between the University of Nebraska and the private sector, and I think this building will be unique. It's really designed with the tech company amenities and really the design mantra for them. So I think this will be a further innovation within the campus and a next step for Innovation Campus. And like I said, this could be, you know, one of 20 buildings to come on the Innovation Campus. Full build-out, we think there's multiple opportunities here, and Nebraska Nova has prepared a full build-out plan. How do we get from point A to point Z? And so it'll be exciting to see over the next decade.
And we should have some coffee from the mill for them now.
That is true. That is a nice amenity to have.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none, please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next, we'll go on to public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 27 is adopting the supplements to Lincoln Municipal Code dated June 2016 and December 2016 as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code.
Good afternoon. Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. This item is something we bring forward every year for the council to approve. It is not approving any new parts to the city code. It is just codifying changes to the ordinance that you've previously adopted over the course of the year. And so once a year, we bring it to you and say, this is a codified version, and we ask you to officially adopt it.
Questions for Jeff? Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none, please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next, we'll go on to public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 27 is adopting the supplements to Lincoln Municipal Code dated June 2016 and December 2016 as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code.
Good afternoon. Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. This item is something we bring forward every year for the council to approve. It is not approving any new parts to the city code. It is just codifying changes to the ordinance that you've previously adopted over the course of the year. And so once a year, we bring it to you and say, this is a codified version, and we ask you to officially adopt it.
Questions for Jeff? Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this item? All right. Please call the next time, Teresa.
All right. Next is item 28, ordinance approving a master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement and property Schedule Number Three with U.S. Bancor Government Leasing and Finance and a related escrow agreement for street maintenance equipment in the amount of $2,232,502.76.
Good afternoon. Bob Walla, purchasing agent. We are requesting the second and third reading for this today in order to take advantage of the interest rates that we've been given as part of this request for proposals. The evaluation of the six proposals that we received took a little bit longer than we expected them to, which is why we've come up against this date. The other part to throw in there is the Fed market has went up, I believe, twice since this RFP was issued, and with that, the bank has given us the rest of this week in order to complete the documents and move forward with the contract. So that is why we are requesting both to be read today for final approval.
Any questions? Cindy?
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so I was a little concerned about the urgency, so thank you for clarifying that. They're not saying absolutely if you go an extra week, it's going to cost you more. They're just saying we guarantee it through the end of this week.
Well, it will cost us more because they're only guaranteeing that amount through Friday, is what they said. So if we do not have it signed into them by Friday, we would either have to see if we can agree to a different amount, or we would have to do a new RFP, which has been suggested as well.
Okay. And as I understand it, this is renewing something that's from four years ago? Or is the same contract as the one we had four years ago?
There was a reference to a U.S. Bancor contract that we have. I'm not familiar with that. I know that we issued this through the RFP process, which is where the 1.64 comes from.
I see. So I guess my question is, is, well, I mean, perhaps my question's not for you, but I don't know. I'm wondering if this, we already had this in our budget as far as debt service and so forth for this lease agreement, for the one we did the budget in August last year.
I'm sorry. I.
I'm sorry to ask you a question.
No, that's okay. I knew someone was here that could answer it.
Jim Childs, Fleet Superintendent, Public Works. Yes, we do have funding in the current year's budget and next year's budget for the annual payments.
And it anticipated this in particular agreement?
Yeah, actually, the payment came in a little bit less than we anticipated, just because of the interest rates.
Okay. I was a little concerned because I saw a bond council signing off on this, and so we're not taking any additional bonds out for the purpose of paying this.
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Mike Rogers, jump. You want to come up and speak?
I'm Mike Rogers with Killmore and Bell Bond Council. No, it's not a, it's not a bond issue. It's lease purchase financing directly with U.S. Bancor. So instead of issuing bonds to the public, this is, it's a direct lending sort of situation, but it's not a loan. It's a lease purchase financing, and the reason an ordinance or an agreement four years old is referenced is this is a supplement to that, to the original agreement entered into four years ago. And so this is property Schedule Number Three. So this is the third lease purchase arrangement that the city will have with U.S. Bancor under this same master lease purchase agreement. It just so happened that they, they were the successful bidder in this particular instance for this, for this, for the street sweepers. Is that the right?
There's actually 10 different pieces of equipment that are being replaced.
And at the end of it, we, the city owns the equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Trent?
The difference between a bond, a certificate of participation, and this is there's no allocation of the city's levy towards the actual instrument, correct?
Yes. The, a bond issue would be something that would be voted or revenue bond issue, for example, and those would be marketed under an official statement and sold to the public. Certificates of participation are also lease purchase obligations, but those, the participation interests are also marketed to the public and sold to the public. This is just a lease purchase directly with one individual bank.
We don't pay, they take the equipment back, that whole thing?
Right. They could also require the city to continue to make payments. It's not a, it's not subject to annual appropriation. It's a, it's a long-term, multiple-year contract.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for taking the time to explain that to us. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing none, please call the next time.
All right. I'll call items 29 through 31. They're approving the Lumberworks Liner Building Redevelopment Agreement between the city and Lumberworks Lofts LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located east of Canopy Street and south of O Street, adjacent to the Lumberworks parking garage, amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $2,41,096 in TIF funds for the project and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds.
Members of the city council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, applicant in this case, with the developer and Hallie Salem, who represented the city in most of the conversations with the developer, as well as Mike Rogers on behalf of the bond acquisition. This is the projected Lumberworks Liner Building. It's taken several times to get there, but we are excited to bring this project forward. This is a redevelopment agreement. It's also a CIP amendment and a request for a resolution for an amendment to the 1617 CIP and to appropriate $2,41,000 in TIF funds, of TIF funds for this building redevelopment project. The project money or the resources that will be spent from the TIF allocation will include the acquisition of the land by the developer, site, streetscape, and right-of-way improvements. And by the way, this is right in front of the Canopy Street, so it's the conclusion of that long line of Canopy. This will be the final piece of the puzzle for the Canopy. Facade upgrades, the DEC connection fees and costs, and by the way, the more that we use the District Energy Corporation, the better it is for every one of those users, a number of whom are public as well as private, and it improves the performance for energy efficiency at the arena. Utility relocation, demolition and site preparation, and environmental cleanup. We're looking at essentially two buildings, one on the north and then one on the west. It wraps around the Lumberworks Garage. The building will have 75,000 square feet of first-floor retail, including a grocery store, and office space as well as 53 residential units. The office space will be largely on the north side, the residential and some of the retail will be on the west side. The proposed project will align the unfinished side and the north side of the garage with the lumber, with Liner Works building, and behind this then will be the garage. So this will be the west-facing view as you come in over Westo into the city of Lincoln, enhancing, I think you would agree, the entryway from that direction. It is the conclusion of the Canopy Street. It's the continuation of the DEC. It is the south Haymarket's need for residential use. And there is a lease for a grocery store in the downtown area, all tied up in this project. Hallie's here, Mike's here, and the developers are here. What questions might you have for me or any of them?
Any questions from the council? Do you have any, like, aerial photos or aerial maps that you could show us of how this wraps?
I do have a map of the project area. It's not, I think it can be blown up. It'd be better if I blew it this way. This is the location of the building. There. So here is the existing garage. Here's that location. And this is the project area. If you were to see a little closer up, here's that north building for the offices.
Could you zoom out a little bit? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Here's the north building, here's the west building, here's the garage, here's the LES substation.
Thank you, that's helpful. Any other questions from council?
Well, while you have that map up, sorry, Dave. The grocery store, where will that be in that?
Oh, we can't see.
Oh. Now I'm going to, I think it's directly behind the parking that's here. In other words, this is where I think the grocery store is. And part of the, of the necessity in a grocery store is access and convenience for customers, which is why these parking spaces would be very important to the operation of the grocery store. And that's why it's so approximately located here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others here to speak to this item?
Good afternoon, members of the City Council, my name's Peter Cat. I'm appearing on behalf of the developers. Many of the representatives are present here, should there be additional questions. I've not had the privilege of working on this project, but I have the privilege of appearing in front of you today because my partner needed to be out of town. But what an exciting project for the south end of the Haymarket. We, the community has looked for a long time and had planned for an opportunity at this space. It took a while to come together, but it came together, it was well worth the wait. We get a grocery store in downtown Lincoln, phenomenal. And the other part I think that is really important about this project is that we're able now to try to grab the north Haymarket area and extend it south, which creates another phenomenal opportunity for our community. If you ask me details about this, I'll need to bring other people up. I've been, I've been having the same pleasure, I think, that you and the rest of the community have, finally, following the progress of this project through the newspaper. It's now ready to get approved, moved forward, and built. Be happy to answer any questions that I can, or bring up others if you'd like more details that I can't provide.
I have a question for you, I wanted to thank you for being here, nice to see you again. We don't see you enough here, that's for sure.
Thanks, I don't know that everyone in City Hall would agree with that.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mark Whitehead's my name, President of Whitehead Oil Company and a part-owner of that. We also are 50/50 partners in Y-Mole Energy, and my other 50% is Joe Moline over here. To give you a little bit of a history on this, our acquaintances really haven't lasted all that long. We both had the same idea, but in going different directions. We both had the opportunity to work with Clay, who presented the opportunity for the grocery market. We met each other, we both, we think we bring different disciplines to the project. She is very familiar with operating grocery stores that are roughly the same footprint. They operate three in western Nebraska and eastern Colorado. I, of course, have been doing retail in the city of Lincoln for 50 years. It's an organization, I personally have not been doing it for, or 60 years. But I personally have not been doing it that long, but we're excited about this. In fact, so much so that, again, I had already started laying plans to put a grocery market in at a different location prior to the Two of Us meeting, and presented the same opportunity to the Moline's as well in the other space. But we liked this space well enough, for a variety of reasons, that we decided to abandon the other space and commit behind this one. We've been working hand-in-hand with the developer to work on our floor plans that relates to structural issues, that they can basically build the building around our space. And, and do that, and we will refine it in the months to come. But we'd be glad to answer any kind of questions that you might have, either from an operational perspective or from my perspective as well.
Could you just give us your address real quick before we ask questions? Your address for the record?
My address, 2537 Randolph Earths. Let's see, it will be 140 Canopy Street, Drive, Suite 100.
My name's Jill Moline, I'm, my address is 440 West 11th Street, and I am from Imperial, Nebraska.
You want to tell us a little bit about this project from your perspective?
Sure, Mark covered a lot of it, but I was raised in a grocery store environment. My parents had a grocery store. We run one in Imperial, Nebraska, one in Holyoke, Colorado, and one in Ray, Colorado. And I'm used to the community smaller store setting, and that's what kind of lends our, it lends itself to this Haymarket project is, there's a lot of residents down there, there's students down there, there's just a real need for a local grocery store. And we started working on the project and then realized that Mark was kind of going the same direction and formed a partnership. And he is so well-versed and familiar with Lincoln that it's going to work out great. But I can kind of bring the community, the grocery buying, the products. We want to have a meat person in the store, we'll have a fresh deli area, we'll have everything that a, a local grocery store can offer the community down here.
Yes, thank you, and thanks for your interest in this project. As a downtown resident, we, we need a downtown grocery store, especially for, for meats and fresh produce. Those are things that are really vital, and, and the deli idea is terrific too. What else will we see?
Well, we would love to incorporate a lot of the, the local vendors. We, you have an amazing group of, that you see at your farmer's market and everything, that we would be able to possibly give the opportunity to sell year-round. We will have floral, we'll have bakery, we'll have, like I said, fresh meats. Hopefully, we can do our own sausage and things like that. But it's going to kind of take a while to figure out the mix, that's going to be the hardest, because it's a small store. It will be a, a small footprint there. But we would love to have like a beverage counter, a fountain, things like that, that students can utilize, but the downtown workers can come and get a fresh, quick meal. They can grab a banana, a yogurt, something to take back to the office. So it's going to be a, hopefully, a great scaled-down model of a full-service grocery store.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about these items? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next is item 32, text amendment 16020, amending title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the zoning code by amending section 27.62.100(c)(2) to modify the front and side yard setbacks for car sales and remove conditions that are no longer needed by amending section 27.67.040 to create a new parking requirement for motorized vehicle sales for lots less than two acres, and repealing sections 27.62.100(c)(2) and 27.67.040 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. We did have a request to continue public hearing on this item to May 1st, but if anyone is here and wishes to testify, they can.
Would anyone like to come forward and speak to this item, item number 32? All right, seeing none, Teresa?
All right, we can return to item 19 then, application of Omaha Exposition and Racing for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 55 feet by 205 feet, 440 feet by 123 feet, and 35 feet by 60 feet at Lincoln Racecourse at 7055 South First Street on May 5th, 6th, and 20th, June 10th, September 8th and 15th, and November 4th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
I want to apologize for not being here earlier, and thank you very much for seeing me later. So what this is, oh, sorry, Kristi Harris, 7055 South First Street, Lincoln Racecourse. What we have is our STL for our major events that we have out at Lincoln Racecourse. The first one being Derby, the Kentucky Derby, which is the 5th and the 6th of, of May. And then the next one would be the Preakness, which is two weeks after that, May 20th. And then the third one is, is the Belmont Stakes, which is the last leg of the Triple Crown, and that is June 10th. And then we go into our live racing, which is September 8th and September 15th. We usually do have it on one day of the year. This year, we're planning on two races for two days out of the year, and we're switching it from a Thursday to a Friday. And we're trying to kind of combine it with maybe people's travel as they come into town, and maybe they'll stay overnight on Friday night for the football game on Saturday night. So trying to make it more of a fall festival type of atmosphere, make it kind of kid-friendly, having pony rides and things like that is what our, our plan is this year. And then the last event is the Breeders' Cup, which is November 4th, and that's a Saturday.
Any questions? All right, thanks for racing down.
All right, thank you.
Got to amuse myself, okay. Anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, Teresa, please call.
Would someone like to move approval of this item?
All right.
I would move approval of this item.
Second.
Moved by Carl and second by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
No nays.
Both of you.
All right, that concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session then. Public hearing resolutions. Item 23 is the inter-local service agreement with the UNL Board of Regents for hosting and maintaining a portal for online food handler and city alcohol training programs and providing technical support services, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Second by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 24 is Comp Plan Conformance 17004. This is the proposed Cotner and P Street redevelopment plan, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 25 is the Nebraska Innovation Campus Phase II Redevelopment Agreement, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Jane, discussion? It's just nice to see further progress out of Innovation Campus. The designs look impressive, and I hope that they are able to leverage the research power of the university to bring more businesses to Lincoln. Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 26 then is amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,116,291 in TIF funds for the Nebraska Innovation Campus Phase II project, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Jane, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Public hearing ordinance's second reading are items 27 through 32. We did have the request on item 28 for second and third reading with action today, if you wish to grant that.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trent, second by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. This item then was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Carl, second by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then. Item 32, we have the request to continue public hearing to May 1st.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy and second by Carl, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Ordinance's third reading, item 33 is approving the Ninth and O Redevelopment Agreement with HLI Development LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally bounded by Ninth Street on the west, 10th Street on the east, and O Street on the north, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Second by Carl, discussion?
We do have a motion to amend number one on this item.
I do, and the, see, this is to correct, to correctly describe all the elements of the new building, which will need to encroach into 5.5-foot-square encroachment easement. Four additional encroachments have been identified north and south of the window well, consisting of a planter north of the window well and stairs, et cetera.
Can I get a second on the motion to amend number one? Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane, discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Now in the main motion, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 34 is amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $11,663,514 in TIF funds and $2,350,000 in EEA funds for the Ninth and O redevelopment project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, discussion, Cindy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would make a move to divide the question in this particular instance to separate out the amendment for the TIF and the EEA. I have for each of the members a copy of each, I've checked, had legal actually just duplicate the ordinance, but each one is a single question. One is the TIF and one is the EEA, and you'll see that at line 19 and 20. If I could have a second?
Second.
And then I just wanted to ask if we could, Jeff, one question. Jeff, please. Jeff, I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney.
Thank you, looking at line 19, I was visiting with the chair, and we saw a number two in there on line 19, and wondered if that was just something left over from before we divided the question?
I suspect it was, is there an extra? Yes.
Be taken care of clerically?
Yeah, we can, we can take care of that clerically. It doesn't interfere or add any meaning or subtract any meaning from the resolution.
Well, actually, do we need to vote on a division of the question? Any member can do that by write, correct?
If the items are unrelated, it can be done by write, if they're related, it has to be done by vote.
And if it's clearly related.
Yeah, okay, all right. So that was moved by Cindy and seconded by Trent?
Yes.
All right, further discussion? Go ahead.
You want me to say?
Yeah.
So clearly, I guess if you're looking at the line 19, 20, A is TIF, B is EEA, just for your voting pleasure.
Teresa? Teresa? Okay. All right, so let's, any further comment on the division of the question, motion? All right, let's call the roll on the motion.
This is the dividing the question. This is the dividing the question.
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay. So now we'll need to take them up separately?
Yes.
So, uh, I'm not sure how the number, I guess, do you want to call this one?
One is A and one is B.
Yeah.
It's up in the left-hand corner, ninety?
Yep. Okay.
Ninety-seven A and ninety-seven B. Which one is A? Is that the TIF? The TIF, yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. Discussion on A?
So should I move to?
Move approval?
Move approval of seventeen R ninety-seven A.
Second.
Moved by Cindy and seconded by Roy. Discussion? Any discussion? No comments? Okay. We know that this is a very complicated piece of property at Ninth and O that has had significant challenges, has had, we've had a blight there for years in the forms of burned-out buildings and properties, and the use of TIF is clearly justified at this site. It's, uh, it's going to take a lot of investment to get this project done. Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Then we have B.
I move ninety-seven B.
Second. Moved by Roy and seconded by Jane. Discussion? Trent?
Um, I apologize to my colleagues for having to go through this, um, on this item. Uh, Cindy and I had talked about it, um, and I appreciate your, your yes vote on dividing of those two items. That was, uh, very generous of you. Um, you know, it, I felt strongly that, uh, we as a city shouldn't be lending our taxing authority to, uh, developers. Uh, this is not a comment about the project. I appreciate the investment that's being made here, uh, but, you know, this is a leap too far for me. Um, I've said that on other items that are, uh, of similar, uh, nature as this one, and, uh, you know, it will be nice to see the project go forward, but for the enhanced employment area, uh, I, I just don't think that that's something that government should be sticking, uh, getting into, um, as a development policy.
Roy?
Um, I think this is a very important project, and without this component, I don't think it flies, so I'm going to support it.
Carl and Jane?
Yes, uh, thank you. It, as I understand it, the approximate value of this new project when completed, seventy-two million dollars, it's, it's a huge, huge investment in our community, and, uh, on a, just a, a critical intersection right in the heart of downtown, it's something that's, that's obviously needed. Um, we want this to be as strong of a project as possible. I think it's necessary. It's one of the tools, one of the few tools we have for, for providing, uh, enhancement financially to a project, and I support it.
Jane? I think it's important that we do everything that we have in our arsenal to really attract redevelopment projects of this kind. Um, it's my understanding that this, this hotel, which is two hotels, will actually tip us, no basketball pun intended, to qualify for a lot of NCAA, uh, regional, uh, championship games that we could possibly host, because then we'll have, uh, exceeded the number of hotels that is required by NCAA to host a tournament of that kind. And I think it's really important to, to point out that, um, most municipalities have some type of enhanced, uh, zone, or enterprise zone, or entertainment district, theater district, an overlay of some kind where they can attract and develop the type of, uh, facilities that will help that city or municipality grow. And I think this taxes itself is, it's a two percent, but it's going to be charged for the hotel rooms per night. Uh, and that's important to, to recognize that it's a lot of out-of-town people will be staying at this amazing hotel, and, uh, that's really the type of tax that we like to do, do more for visitors coming to our city, uh, so that we can capitalize on that and really support this project. The other part of it is the two percent of gross receipts that are going to be coming from the operation of the ballroom, and it's the food and beverages. So it's pretty isolated and restrictive in, in what it's targeting. Um, it's the ballroom and food and beverages. So I think it's crafted well. I think it's, it's, uh, compared to some of the other, uh, economic development tools, I think it's less onerous to our current population and current, uh, taxpayer base. And so I think it's something that we should wildly embrace, because this is going to transform a, a corner of our city. It's going to make it the, the centerpiece of, uh, an entranceway that is very important in our city, and, and, uh, I think it's, it's, it's an exciting addition to our city. So I am clearly going to support this. Cindy?
Thank you. I too appreciate this project. I think it is going to be a wonderful entry into the city. Um, however, we have a number of hotels going up, uh, downtown right now and going up all around town, and I think that, um, at this point, I don't, I hate to become a patchwork quilt. We had a one percent, uh, special tax out south. Now we have a, a two percent tax, and I don't know where, where that ends, and I am concerned that we price our guests out of our market. Um, while I appreciate the project, um, I, it, this, the amount, the purpose of this is strictly for adding a tax, an additional tax on the folks that are there, including merchants that have, that would have, uh, displays there. Uh, it's not just the food and beverage and the hotel rooms, but, um, that said, I, I just, um, I think at some place we have to stop, and we, we're picking and choosing, and, um, so I'm not going to support the resolution for the EEA.
I would just like to get clarification of something, though. Mike Lang, if you could come up, because I believe Jane mentioned that the, this would apply to the food and beverage. I was under the impression it does not. I thought we had a question about that in the public hearing. Can we just clarify that for the record?
It says for the operation of the ballroom.
For the ballroom.
Ballroom.
But.
Mike Lang from the Mayor's Department. Uh, the occupation tax will be on the hotel rooms and the banquet facility food and beverage.
It is on food and beverage. Okay.
But it's not on the, the restaurant? If there's a-
No, it is not. If there's a retail component in the restaurant, there will be no. As a matter of fact, in terms, in our policy guidelines, we exclude food and beverage specifically, but this is a different case.
Great. Thank you for clarifying.
And Mike, one, one final question. It, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's a, a twenty-year tax or sooner? Correct if it gets paid off sooner.
If it can be paid off sooner, but the statutory term limit on the bond is twenty years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Further comments? Please call a roll, Teresa.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried four to two. Next, then, is item thirty-five, authorizing a two percent occupation tax effective January first, twenty twenty, on grocery receipts for the operation of a general business within the designated enhanced employment area to be used to pay for construction and operation of two hotels to be located within the Ninth and O Redevelopment Area, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried four to two. Next, then, is item thirty-six, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Ninth and O Redevelopment Project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion? We have a motion to amend number one.
And we have a motion to amend number one on this as well.
I move we approve a motion to amend number one, which will more accurately describe the mixed-use building, including in the definition of the project and related references here, too.
Second.
Moved by Jane. Seconded by Roy. Discussion on the motion to amend? Please call a roll on the motion to amend.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried six to zero. Next, then, is item thirty-seven, authorizing-
I think we-
Oh, I'm sorry. Main motion.
Any discussion on the main motion? All right, please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried six to zero. Next, then, is item thirty-seven, authorizing-
I think we-
We need to-
Oh, I'm sorry. Main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? All right, please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried four to two. Resolutions on first reading, just one item thirty-eight.
Wait, did we vote on the motion to amend and the main motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead again. Main motion on item thirty-seven.
I am paying attention.
Thank you.
I thought someone was-
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried four to two. Resolutions on first reading, just item thirty-eight.
Wait, did we vote on the motion to amend and the main motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead again. Main motion on item thirty-seven.
I am paying attention.
Thank you.
I thought someone was-
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried four to two. Resolutions on first reading, just item thirty-eight.
Wait, did we vote on the motion to amend and the main motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead again. Main motion on item thirty-seven.
I am paying attention.
Thank you.
I thought someone was-
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb? Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Motion carried four to two. Resolutions on first reading, just item thirty-eight, ordinances on first reading are items thirty-nine through forty-four, on items thirty-nine through forty-one, we did have a request to delay introduction again one week to April seventeenth.
So moved.
Okay, motion to delay one week to April seventeenth, moved by Roy, seconded by Carl, discussion? Please call the roll on that motion.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
I'm going to?
Madam Chair?
Move to?
Before you move, too quick. I would like to make a movement to withdraw item forty-five.
Oh, wait a minute, we're not done with the voting session.
Okay, sorry.
Even close, okay, I'm moving to delay by one week, item number forty-four, and I, I need a second on it, please?
You want to delay introduction one week?
Moved by Roy, seconded by Trent, and we have staff here to explain them.
Rick Hoppy, Mayor's Office, thank you for the time, counsel, our thinking here was by delaying the pension ordinance introduction by one week and having the hearing on the twenty-fourth of April rather than seventeenth, it would allow us to do two things, as you are all aware, pension issues tend to be very complicated, we would like next week to have a pre-counsel, which I've spoken to the Chair about, to review some of the issues regarding the pension, to review the work done by Mr. Fellers Committee on the pension, and just get familiarize ourself with the details of what's happening and why. Second of all, it was pointed out to me this weekend that a couple of the employee groups that are obviously impacted by this pension feel like they have not had any upfront input on the pension ordinance, and this would give us time to pull together a meeting, hear what they have to say before the public hearing, which I think they would greatly appreciate, so we're hopeful that you'd allow that week delay.
Okay, thank you, and Jeff?
If I could add just a logistical item, when we reviewed the, the draft that was sent out in your packet last week, well, I made a mistake, and there were, the, the code sections that weren't changed were changed, and so we're going to fix that, and you will get a, a new version in your next packet, if you want to, you can read through it in some depth and see if you can find any more mistakes, or you could just assume that none of the changes from the first version are significant, but there will be a new version in your packet that comes out Thursday.
We'll have that prior to the pre-counsel.
Yeah, it'll go out in the packet Thursday.
Okay.
The new version.
All right, thank you, thank you, okay, so any further discussion on the motion to delay this item and have public hearing on April twenty-fourth? All right, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Cam? Oh, sorry, he's gone. Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Now?
Yes, Cindy?
Thank you, I'm sorry, would like to move to withdraw item forty-five, which is sixteen R two ninety-one, in accordance with the completion of our compromise package.
Second.
Moved by Cindy and seconded by Trent, discussion? Okay, thanks for the good work, everybody, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Anyone wishing to address the counsel on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since it is open microphone. I invite you to paradise on earth, there are some corrections, throw out your microwave ovens, it can be turned on with the door open by a terrorist, foreigners may have a remote to turn it on from the street, microwaves may cause a tough tummy that, with pain, gallstones, cataracts, and is lethal, make castor oil illegal, because it is lethal if massaged with castor oil with a mater, a massage therapist, and for a sonogram to cause miscarriages, catatonic schizophrenia is actually from an herb, when Americans got Soviets out of the psych facilities in the nineteen seventies, catatonia symptoms disappeared, the Soviets had tainted their food, have clay or dirt for any tainting, detox, or disease, over here is a painting that I did of my nephew Dang, Breidenbach Swaboda in December nineteen eighty-one, we miss you, Dang, I found Bill Avery's photo next to Michael Hayden, had terror Soviet weathermen on the internet, in October nineteen seventy-nine, my communist sister Therese Swaboda, with her little son Dang in a stroller, introduced Bill Avery next to a high-rise in the Little Village Inn, New York City, Bill Avery stated a city councilwoman had leapt from her high-rise balcony during the night, Therese Swaboda often came out at two AM to get bread from a Greenwich Village bakery, on March fifteenth nineteen eighty-two, a year and a half later, Therese Swaboda pushed her own four-year-old son out of a third-door, story door on Twenty-third Bond Street, his skull had broken to thirteen bones, and he passed away three days later, his body parts were taken quote-unquote "by mafia," stated Therese, to help cure several children, one a seventy-year-old girl, and eyes to an older person, Dang's passing made the front page New York Post daily, what was extraordinary was that the father, George Breidenbach, had asked Dang a month beforehand if Dang were to pass away, would Dang give his organs to, to live children, he said yes, the background came from a photo on Thirty-third and Sixth Avenue Building that collapsed on March fifteenth nineteen seventy-seven, when nine hundred and ninety-nine gay men perished within a minute, George was viewing the debris all day long for six weeks, because he did the insedentary, and was looking for debris that was an insedentary to be taken away during nighttime, I stated to Dang in December nineteen eighty-one, the painting was done in sorrow because of the divorce of his parents, previous to this in nineteen seventy-six, Therese Swaboda and George Breidenbach were in a Smithsonian Grant going around the world, George, I later realized, did a coup in Tahiti, Samoa, Uganda, and Sudan, they were all communist coups, and George, Therese and George had dinner with Idi Amin, did the coup, and had dinner with a bow two weeks later, the day of the Sudan coup, Therese and George got on a plane with Vladimir Putin, heading north, Therese wrote in Glamour Magazine that she walked around Khartoum to get to the plane while bullets flew and men were slain with agony, only a dozen whites have stayed in Sudan since then, because the Muslims genocided twenty-three million South Sudanese, I took a picture of a man who was holding up a skull in the basement of another demolition on Canal Street in the spring of nineteen seventy-nine, that possibly many Chinese perished, a half mile later, my camera was pickpocketed, cocaine communists have even done away with their own child, it is Dang that should be alive today, the FBI and Lincoln had been informed, Therese wrote a book called Treason, available on the internet, about being a betrayer of her country, those are the, her exact words in her advertisement, she also has a book of a biography of Lola Ridge, Lola Ridge was a Russian communist that arrived in nineteen fourteen, had two terrorist maters, and went into San Quentin Prison for insedentary in a building in San Francisco, Therese is either in Lincoln, or at Seventy-Six Letalo Street in New York City, or Greenport, Long Island, Therese has written her guilt into her writing.
Would anyone else like to come forward? All right.
Seems I'm the guy you've been looking for since three o'clock. Sheriff Gaylor Baird, members of the council, Gary Aldridge, A-L-D-R-I-D-G-E, seven one one two, South forty-five, XX five one six, I'm one of the owners, I use this time for a point of personal privilege, perhaps more a point of personal pride, regarding Staff Sergeant Aaron Marshall Aldridge, youngest son of Margaret and Gary Aldridge, notice the order, my wife first, with respect to our sons, she did all the heavy lifting, Sergeant Aldridge of Company G two one thirty-five, General Support Aviation Battalion, Nebraska Army National Guard, accepted a position with Company G two one oh four GSAB, United States Army, at the same rank and pay, the position is temporary, this band of sisters and brothers, two one oh four GSAB, departed Lincoln, June two thousand sixteen, the itinerary, subject to military planning, Fort Hood, Texas, transit to Gulf, final destination, third week, July two thousand sixteen, KAF, Kandahar Airfield, Islamic Republic of Afghanistan, life is cluttered with risk, more so these days in a place like Afghanistan, I confess, and I speak for my, for my wife, this made me nervous, anxious, and uneasy, excuse me, I am not unmindful, which is to say I am mindful, Afghanistan seems largely untamed and/or disordered, I suspect the role and mission of this band of sisters and brothers, in a country where transport by helicopter is rapid and efficient, is providing rapid and efficient transport by helicopter, for a military and civilian population, alas, death is never far from life, each compete in a zero-sum game, at departure, the estimated return, both route and date open, spring two thousand seventeen, Saturday last, approximately thirteen thirty local time, my wife receives a text message, Company G two one oh four GSAB was in Kuwait, it is less important, when, it is less important when two one oh four GSAB departed the airspace of Afghanistan, and more important, that the band of sisters and brothers had in fact departed the airspace of Afghanistan, remaining path, Kuwait, to Fort Hood, to Lincoln, all should clearly understand, two one oh four GSAB replaced and displaced homeward others, from I think Wyoming, and two one oh four GSAB is replaced and displaced homeward by others, I think the Wisconsin Guard, I hope the effort will require others travel this path less often, to my son and this band of sisters and brothers, what can a parent or anyone offer that does not appear weak and fruitless, father to son going in harm's way, Afghanistan will not be much fun, this is serious business, do your job, keep your head down, don't be a hero, son to father, I'll be home soon, soon, maybe, maybe Friday this week, speaking only for myself, to Company G two one oh four, United States Army, soon to be Company G two one thirty-five, Nebraska Army Guard, welcome home, I'm glad you're back, selected, select, selected statistics from Afghanistan, calendar year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, fourteen US soldiers died, eleven by enemy fire, they normally have a, was that my time?
Yeah, forty-four seconds left.
They normally have a going-away ceremony, and they normally have a return ceremony, it normally will be at the guard base, if you've never attended one of those, I would suggest maybe you should, because there's, it's a small group, about forty, forty-some people, I know my son owns a house in the Belmont area, so he is a constituent of, I think at least four of you, three at large and one district, thank you.
It's just Gary, when, when do they get back, Friday, do you know?
I, I, I don't know, he was thinking Friday, but that again is up to military planning, and that, that's fraught with a lot of...
Thanks, Gary.
Sometime this month. Or earlier, you never know.
I move adjournment.
Second? Moved by Roy, seconded by Jane, please call the roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb? Motion carried six to zero.
We are adjourned.